All right, good evening and welcome to the September 8th Special City Council Meeting. It is 6:00 PM, so we will call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we sure do.
Excellent. So what's our first item on the agenda, please?
Item two, invocation given by Mayor Greenberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and Texas flags.
Thank you. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight when our nation has seen a couple of instances that have put a soft spot on our heart. God, we cry out to you that you would restore our nation, heal our land. We know that you are a sovereign God and a mighty God, and so we pray for that protection on our nation and on our culture. God, we pray that as we deliberate tonight, that we consider new items, that as we continue to go over the budget, that you'll give each of us wisdom and discernment to do what's best for the city of Fait, and that you'll let everyone in here, you'll put your spirit on all of us tonight to know that we are working hard for the good of this city, and that through that, Lord, we ask that you bless us for that. Thank you for bringing us here safely. Help us have a good meeting tonight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, what is our next item, please?
Next will be Agenda Item 3A, which is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month Proclamation.
Okay, whereas September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a time when millions of people around the world join their voices to promote suicide prevention awareness, and whereas understanding the issues concerning suicide and mental health is an important way to take part in suicide prevention, help others in crisis, and change the conversation around suicide, and whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death overall in the United States, and the second leading cause of death for people aged 10 to 34, and whereas too many of our nation's veterans and active military service members have also considered suicide or taken their own lives, and whereas suicide is not inevitable for anyone, by starting the conversation, providing support, and directing help to those who need it, we can prevent suicides and save lives, and whereas the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline offers 24/7 call, text, and chat access to trained crisis counselors who can help people in suicidal crises or any kind of emotional distress. If you or someone you know is struggling or in crisis, help is available. Call or text 988 or chat 988lifeline.org to reach trained crisis counselors. And whereas everyone in our community can play a role in preventing suicide, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. A simple phone call, message, or hug can go a long way toward helping someone realize suicide is not and is never the answer. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Greenberg, Mayor of the City of Fait, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Fait, Texas, and urge all citizens to spread the word about suicide prevention and be the one to help save a life. Thank you. And I understand that we have a representative from the American Legion who would like to come up and say a few words regarding this. Please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I am Hady Spencer. I'm the commander of the Roy City American Legion. I'm so grateful that you guys took the time to put the proclamation forward. I also want to say thank you to Commissioner John Stacy. He's been a great advocate to help promote 988 throughout the Rockwall County, and so I'm really appreciative of his support for this endeavor. This is our fourth year on putting on the suicide awareness proclamations. I would like to say this time, some of the statistics, as you have stated, sir, in the U.S., like you stated, it is the 11th leading cause of death. Every 11 minutes, somebody in the U.S. is going to take their own life. Every 63 minutes, a veteran will die by suicide. That is 22 a day, 660 a month, and over 79,000, 7,900 per year. That's uncalled for. In Texas, it is ranked number 37 in the U.S., suicide is, and as you stated, it is the leading cause for 10- to 34-year-olds' deaths. Every two hours, a Texan will take their life. So after a meeting, there will be a Texan suicide. Those are the statistics. 4,368 Texans died by suicide. 3,500 were male, 879 were female. 582 Texans veterans died by suicide. 549 were male, and 33 were female. Texans' first responders die by suicide on the average of two per month. 20% of high school teens literally have a plan for suicide this year. A Texan as young as 10 and a Texan as old as 85 have chosen to die by suicide. In July 2025, over 40,000 calls were made to the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Suicide does not discriminate. Please check on your people, and let's be kind to one another out there. Again, Mayor, thank you so much for your time. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Vicki, what is the next item on our agenda, please?
citizens that have signed up to speak with public comments for items not on the agenda, first being Randy Long, address 2263 Bryant Lane.
Welcome, Mr. Long.
Good evening. Boy, I hate following a presentation like that. That's very sobering and difficult, but I do come bearing glad tidings tonight for a change, so it's not as bad as it could be. Regardless of the vote, when you vote on the budget, there will be those who agree and those who disagree. There will always be skepticism and disagreement when you're writing checks out of other people's checkbooks. I cannot speak for others, but as for myself, I have confidence in however you vote. For the very first time in six years, I have faith and trust in the budget process. I feel that you have done your due diligence, put in the time, effort, and discussion necessary to balance the essential needs of the city with the needs and wishes and financial resources of the citizens. I have truly seen transparency, creativity, and debate. I've seen leadership, fiscal responsibility, and questioning that has never been in evidence before. You should take pride in knowing that you have made huge strides in restoring trust and confidence. I also feel that it has been a learning curve and that you have established a new standard going forward, and will continue to tweak the budget and the budget process for savings, efficiency, and cost-effective scenarios. I hope this process becomes a template for future issues, problems, and concerns going forward. The process, discussion, and analysis can be extremely valuable for transparency and validation. More often than not, it is not so much the decision you make, but rather how you communicate the decision. So thank you.
Next is Brant Kelly, address 218 Miko Lane.
Welcome, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, sir, members of the council. I don't have a speech prepared like that fine gentleman right there, because mine was at the swing from the hip if something happened on my way home. I have approached numerous members of the city, our police department, and so forth. We have a very diverse community, and some of the diversity do not understand our street signs, markings, what have you. CD Bourne, Wood Creek Boulevard. People see three lanes. There are supposed to be two straight, one left-hand. I've seen people turn left from all three of them. I've seen people run that stop sign like it's nothing because they don't see it when they're sitting in the left-hand turn lane. I've seen cities that have signs to the right and in the middle. I have said, let's put stop signs here, or hey, let's paint the roads better. Put the markings, put the arrows, spend the budget that that gentleman was just talking about on stuff that could save possible lives, incidents, and so forth. It has happened in two and a half months, I've almost T-boned somebody because they've blown that stop sign to make a left-hand turn. I'm getting tired of it. I've spoke up and this and that. I have also mentioned to other members of the police department, they can feel welcome to sit in my driveway, backed up on Fairchild and Miko Lane, and watch how many people run three stop signs coming up Fairchild. Three. No hesitation. Some of them hesitate. Can anybody in this council tell me what the correct form of a stop is? I don't know. But some people don't understand, it is when those tires stop and your vehicle settles. No rolling, no moving. I'm not perfect. I get it. I admitted to police department and the police chief that when I get on that interstate every morning at 4:30, and granted, there's not much traffic, I'm already up to speed of the interstate on the access road, because if not, you're going to get run over. Another thing about the marking of stop signs, also at Ben Payne and CD Bourne, same thing. One stop sign on the far side. You got to turn lane, a straight lane, and a right-hand turn. Well, now you have two lanes of traffic going straight up Ben Payne to 66. People blow that stop sign as well. Our official, our police department, to me, spends more time running the highway than they do our city. The highway should be left to the highway department and sheriff's department, highway patrol, unless there's an incident. Then it's a different story. You got to respond. I get it. But when I see them sitting out there running for speed, running whatever, when they could be patrolling our neighborhoods for safety, I don't get it. But that's what I have to say about that. It just needs to stop, because there have also been members of this council I have seen run stop signs on every street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And next we have Kate, no last name given, address 3124 Elmwood Street.
Sorry, it's a secret.
Welcome.
I'm from Fait. Been here about 10 months, and it's a beautiful city. It's just a quick question. Who is responsible for the trees that are planted in the median between the I-30 service road and then, I call it 66, on Wood Creek Boulevard?
Ma'am, this is during the time of the agenda, and council can't respond if it's not on the agenda. So a member of staff will get back to you on this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no one else that's signed up to speak.
Okay, so what is our next agenda item, please?
Next we'll move to Item Five, which is Consent Agenda.
Okay. Do I have any thoughts or discussion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we pass the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We'll begin voting. Okay, the motion passes six to zero. Thank you. What is our next item on the agenda, please?
Next we'll move to Six A, which is Discuss, Consider, and Take Any Necessary Action Regarding Ordinance Number O-2025-030, Appointing Tim Hartley as Associate Judge for the City of Fait Municipal Court of Record Number One, with a term of two years. Authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for professional judicial services by and between the City of Fait and Tim Hartley. And following the approval of this ordinance, Presiding Judge Liston will administer the oath of office. oath of office.
Mayor, Council, we have an ordinance and a judicial services contract for the Associate Judge, and this is, we are filling in the, because the Judge Belt resigned as of, effective as of August nineteenth. So, the contract covers for two years, two fiscal years starting October first, and Judge Hartley will support and assist Judge Liston in the municipal court for the City of Fait. And Judge Hartley is here to answer any questions and introduce himself. Judge Hartley?
Thank you. Welcome. Happy to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
Any questions or thoughts from council? Okay. Mr. Kovacs, anything further that you would like to share before we take action on this item?
Now, we've, we've known Mr. Hartley, Tim, for quite a few years and active in the Rockwall Chamber a while ago, and we've got, obviously, a well-qualified attorney in Rockwall County and Rock City of Rockwall area, and so we're, we're very pleased that he would consider being our judge. And when Judge Belts, who's a great, was a great judge, served a couple, a couple meetings, but he had to resign. Our prosecutor works with him and his firm, so when she became the new prosecutor, then he had to resign. So, that's what kind of put all this in motion. So, we've got, Tim, I think he's great, he's gonna be a great judge, alternate judge.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kovacs. So, do I have a motion?
I'll put a motion to pass ordinance zero-dash-two-oh-two-five-dash-oh-three-o.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, please vote. The motion passes six to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Hartley.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So Judge Belts will now swear in Mr. Hartley.
Judge Liston.
Judge Liston, I apologize, Mr. Belts was on my mind, I guess.
That's okay. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm glad that you have a unanimous decision here for Tim Hartley to be our Associate Judge. I've known him a long time, what, at least two decades?
At least two decades and fourteen years working at court together.
Yes, we've worked a long time, so I have full faith and confidence in his ability, and he's an excellent choice for the City of Fait. All right, if you will raise your right hand, please. I, Tim Hartley.
I, Tim Hartley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City of Fait.
Of the City of Fait.
Associate Judge.
Associate Judge.
Of Municipal Court.
Of the Municipal Court.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm gonna take a picture with the group.
Okay.
Okay, and, this, yeah, there you go. All right, one, two, three, cheese, yep.
So many good-looking people, eh?
Okay, what is our next item, please?
Next will be Agenda Item Six B, which this is an application for approval of a zoning change request from agriculture to neighborhood commercial to allow for a drive-through coffee shop plus a walk-up order window, case ZR-25-dash-zero-zero-eight. First will be the staff presentation, followed by applicant presentation, public hearing, and ultimately, consider action on ordinance number O-2025-dash-zero-three-one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Ryan Wells. I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services, and I'll be giving the staff presentation for the Hueys Coffee zoning request. This is project ID ZR-25-zero-zero-eight. So this is what we call a straight zoning request, meaning just from, changing from one zoning district to another. The current zoning of the property is agriculture, as is nearly half of the property located in downtown Fait. The proposed zoning district being requested by the applicant is neighborhood commercial, and the purpose of this zoning change will be to support the development of the applicant's vision of a drive-through and walk-up coffee shop on the subject property. Property in question is a single lot totaling point-nine-one-two acres, located on W. Crawford, which is also FM five-fifty-one, and immediately north of the future Lafayette Crossing development. Again, the current zoning is agriculture, and the property is currently vacant, but there's evidence of previous residential use of the property. Here's an aerial showing the location. You can see it's just on the southern tip of the kind of downtown historical grid. So a zoning change is a discretionary action, and there are three approval criteria listed in the Unified Development Ordinance that we evaluate when bringing our recommendation to the council. First is whether the zoning request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. The comprehensive plan assigns this and neighboring properties a land use designation of dynamic neighborhood, which is a vision of, a mix of residential and commercial uses in a, in a more kind of inclusive and holistic land use assignment. The neighborhood commercial zoning district is a representative zoning district as listed in the comprehensive plan, and commercial services is a representative land use within that district. The second criterion is the consideration of the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So again, here's the aerial of the property with all of the zoning districts from our interactive zoning map, which is located on our website, and here are some actual land uses proposed or currently underway on these neighboring properties. So, as mentioned before, immediately to the south is the Lafayette Crossing mixed-use district, specifically the Project Cactus Commercial Center that will be located on the northwest corner of I-30 and five-fifty-one. Immediately across five-fifty-one from that property is the Commercial Center, which is anchored by the Stags and the Specs and is quickly growing with the new primarily auto-oriented commercial development. To the north on the southwest, southeast corner of Black Oak and Crawford is a property that is entitled for a future office development, and immediately surrounding the subject property to the north and west are some existing single-family residential properties. The third criterion for factors required or allowed by Texas law and case law don't particularly apply in this case. So, we sent a published notice to the local newspaper, as well as mailed public notices to all properties within two-hundred feet of the subject property. As of late last week and no updates since then, we had sent seventeen mailed notices and received one response late last week. This response was against the proposed zoning change, and the respondent expressed their concerns about traffic, the existing traffic on five-fifty-one, and potential noise impacts to the surrounding property owners. With this zoning request, we did run a fiscal analysis presuming of one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine square foot coffee shop, and with that land use for the, within the neighborhood commercial zone, we estimated that the annual revenue in property and sales tax, even though coffee, some baked sale, baked items don't generally create sales tax revenue, but the property and sales tax that would come from the, from the property would be about eighty-three hundred dollars. Proportionate costs to serve the property with law enforcement and whatnot would be about three thousand. The property is wholly on a state road, so there would not be any road maintenance or replacement costs. So ultimately, the revenue-to-cost ratio is two-point-seven-one-to-one, and there's no public-to-private ratio because I, as I said, there's no public roads. So, a revenue-to-cost ratio is an estimate that for every dollar we spend serving that property, we'd receive about two dollars and seventy-one cents in revenues from the various taxes that would come out of it. So the Planning and Zoning Commission evaluated the project last month and provide with you with a recommendation of approval at, with a vote of five-to-one with one member absent at last month's meeting. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, I believe, to answer any questions you may have, but I'm available to answer any questions now if you have them.
Questions from council? Okay, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you, sorry.
I had one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Ryan, do, we don't have any concept plan or anything to, like, nothing to go with this other than just a zoning?
Well, we do, we do have a concept site plan, but because this is a straight zoning case, it's not a required element of the submittal. It basically shows a, a loop drive coming off of five-fifty-one with a single building and some parking spaces. It's nothing, nothing wild, nothing crazy. It does have some landscaping and some wall on the north and west sides to hopefully buffer impacts to those neighboring property owners, and we also have adopted stand, design standards for non-residential uses that will further mitigate some of the potential impacts that could, could come out of being adjacent to residential uses.
How tall is the wall?
At least six feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name's Will Burrows, and the president and co-founder of Hueys Coffee, and I don't have a presentation prepared tonight. Ryan did a pretty good job for us, but yeah, just here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Harvard, do you, are you, all right, Mr. Harvard.
What are your expected hours of operation?
Six AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday, and then seven AM to six PM on Sundays.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Huffman.
Do you currently own any other Hueys Coffee establishments?
Yes, ma'am, we have four operational here in Texas.
Okay.
And then one in Ohio.
And where are the ones in Texas? I should have looked that up, sorry.
Yeah, so we're based in Mount Pleasant. Our closest two here in Fait is in Greenville on Wesley, and then we have Gilmer and Pittsburgh, Texas as well.
So you're familiar with kind of small towns?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Other questions or comments from council? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. All right, Ms. Vicki, next item on the agenda.
If you would like to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we have a public hearing for this agenda item, so I'll open it up at six-twenty-eight PM. We'll officially open the public hearing at six-twenty-eight PM for discussions related to this zoning change.
I've received no requests to address the council.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing section at six-twenty-eight PM. So do I have a motion from council on this issue?
I'll make a motion we pass ordinance number zero-two-dash-two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-three-one.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and begin voting. The motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Vicki, next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item Six C, which is an application for a Type III site plan for a future car wash, case number SP-25-dash-zero-zero-eight. First, staff presentation, second applicant presentation, and then ultimately, consider action on resolution number R-2025-dash-zero-seven-two.
All right, so this is the staff presentation for the Beach Club Car Wash Type III Site Plan, project ID SP-25-zero-zero-eight. So this is a proposal for a car wash with vacuum stalls located within the Wood Creek Plan Development, the commercial sub-district. This is part of the larger modus Wood Creek commercial development at the, on the north, northwest corner of Ben Payne and sixty-six. And the reason that you have this site plan before you tonight is that, per the Wood Creek PD Plan Development, any development in the commercial districts are subject to prior site plan submittal and approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. Normally, we review site plans administratively, staff go through the code, make sure it meets all the code, and we either approve or deny or approve with conditions, but again, because of this plan development, any commercial development within Wood Creek PD needs to come to council. You all have seen some before, and you'll see some again. So the subject property is, again, on the northwest corner of Ben Payne and sixty-six. The parcel is about point-nine-five acres. It's currently undeveloped, and again, it's owned Wood Creek PD Commercial. Here's an aerial of the location. As you can see, the, to the, a little bit to the east is the Ben Payne and sixty-six. It's on Holiday Drive on the, on the, the map, but we know it as State Highway sixty-six as well, intersection there with the Seven-Eleven coming in just to the east. So when we're reviewing a Type III site plan, we do look at the approval criteria, and I'll briefly run through those so you can see what we evaluated when we brought our, to reach our recommendation before you tonight. First is that the application shall comply with applicable standards in the ordinance, and in the ordinance in this case is in the plan development, as well as other city ordinances. We found that with the conditions, as well as the number of reviews that we've done for the, for the application, is consistent with the design standards that we have. Criterion B is that the configuration of public improvements are adequate. There are water and wastewater utilities available to the site. That's been part of the larger modus in Seven-Eleven commercial development, and again, that's in coordination with the other sites being developed more or less concurrently right now. Criterion C is that the application needs to comply with any federal-state jurisdictional regulations. Particularly here is the Texas Department of Transportation, because State Highway sixty-six on the south side of the property is Tech Dot Facility, so we've been working very closely with Tech Dot on getting the appropriate reviews and permits from them. There are no wetlands or floodplains on the project site. Criterion D is that the application needs to comply with interlocal agreements or whatnot. There are none of those that apply in this case. Criterion E is that there may be conditions of approval, and we do have two recommended, recommended conditions for planning and zoning to share with you tonight. Criterion F is that there may be an agreement, a written agreement, between the applicant and the city to enforce those conditions of approval. The resolution that's part of your packet as an exhibit is essentially that agreement should you choose to approve this project with the conditions recommended before you. Criterion G is that it needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and based on the comp plan and the zoning, we find that it's in conformance. Because this Type III site plan is not a particularly discretionary item, although it's more of a ministerial review to make sure that all the boxes have been checked, that I kind of mentioned in those criteria, we did not conduct a fiscal analysis on this proposal. So last month, the Planning and Zoning Commission evaluated this project and bring you a recommendation for approval with conditions, with a vote of six to zero with one absent. The two conditions are as follows. Condition one is that the driveway exiting onto State Highway sixty-six shall be right-in and right-out, as shown on the approved modus shops at Wood Creek Civil Plans, and it references the file number. There was a civil plan that showed basically all the lots within this commercial development. We're just making sure that that's being consistent with their development of this particular parcel. And the condition number two was actually proposed or provided by the Planning and Zone, Planning and Zoning Commission, was that the applicant shall negotiate with the Planning and Development Services Department to determine a set of operational hours prior to the City Council meeting. Last week, we communicated with the applicant team and kind of came to a resolution that the applicant would be proposing operating hours of seven AM to ten PM. That is commensurate with the city's noise ordinance, and so we thought that that was actually an appropriate starting point to their operating hours to make sure that they didn't exceed what our adopted standards are for noise nuisances. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
Is it, is this a two-story structure like the other?
Oh goodness, no, no, this is actually, I find it a rather attractive building. They did a good job on the architecture.
I was trying to look, look on here, and I did not, is there, you have a picture of it or no?
Um, I don't think I have it in here.
Okay.
No, sir, again, in this case, this is gonna be a...
All right, and then the other question that I have is, I mean, this basically is setting backed up to people's houses. What kind of noise abatement do we have?
Sure.
Because there's a lot of vacuum cleaners that are going to be sitting right back there.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we talked a lot about this. We are very cognizant of the adjacency of this lot to Wood Creek Phase 8. By the way, the applicant is here, and we do have a member of their team remoting in, and so the designer will be able to answer some of those design questions as well, although I can tell you, for one, the Wood Creek PD requires a wall between commercial and residential uses, so they are extending the masonry wall that's going behind 711 and the other strip commercial to the east. So there'll be a six-foot masonry wall there for starters. Then, because there's actually an elevation change, so the residences are much lower than this commercial strip, we worked with them, they're actually going to put a secondary wall. See that line of cars kind of going from east to west? That line north, just north of that, that's actually a secondary screen wall that will be further attenuating the noise that would come from the vacuums that are, that are on there. But I think the applicant can probably speak to the fact that the vacuums are a little bit less of a noise nuisance than the actual blowers, and so the blowers being at the further, the southernmost end of the building, as far away as possible, we're trying to mitigate that to the degree that we can, but of course, we have been thinking about that.
And then one last question that I have is, what about light pollution from that site? Because it's going to be, if it's after hours, that, and being above those other houses, is there going to be a problem with that?
So the, we have, our photometric standards are in Article 5 of our Unified Development Ordinance. We require hooded light fixtures. We require no, no bleed over into any residential, residential properties, and so we do have that, if you, I mean, everything is in the packet, so there's a photometric analysis in there that shows that it won't be exceeding the adopted standards for light.
Okay, and you know, some of these questions I asked you is not because I didn't read it, it's because I want you to be able to tell people what, what they didn't read, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you, Ryan. I am Brittany Pierce, I'm the Director of Development for Beach Club Express Wash. We don't have a formal presentation tonight, but very happy to answer any questions you may have. And then, as Ryan mentioned, we also have our architect, Mr. Justin Cassidy, who's remoting in virtually via Teams as well, if you do have any site-specific questions.
Okay, any questions for the applicant from council?
Guess he wasn't in again. I noticed your, your request for 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I have concerns with that, just because, again, this backs up to a neighborhood, and, you know, I'm not sure how many people would be washing their car at 7:00 AM, but I'm pretty sure that's going to be disruptive to, to those neighbors who do back up to I'm wondering what your propensity to change those hours would be.
So I, first, I'd like to note that most of our locations are 24/7, so it's a fully automated process, so typically, our model is to be open 24/7, but of course, you know, we, we are open to negotiation, open to discussion, city to city. We do fully understand we are nearby a residential community on this site. Working with Ryan and his team, we felt that kind of backing into the, the standard noise ordinance was a, was a good spot for us. We have noise studies that do kind of show that, you know, we, we're not going to exceed the ambient street noise as well. We have not done one formally for Fayette because it has not been required, but I have other ones that, that we can kind of point to in reference for that. But that being said, of course, we would, we would love to be open as, as many hours as we can from a business perspective, but we're definitely working, willing to work with the city on what's appropriate.
Do you have other, other of these that back up to neighborhoods?
We do, so, so we have, our parent company is Autec Car Wash Systems, and they've been, I mean, we've built hundreds, probably nearing thousands of retail car washes, so we have different types that are all over the country, so, yes, some have, you know, definitely are nearby residential, yeah. Yes.
Mr. Hatley?
Oh, I was going to ask, because it's not just vacuum cleaners that make noise. I'm, I'm one of those annoying people when I'm getting my car done, that I have my radio up pretty dang loud, because I want to go over the, the sound of the, is there anything that can be done with the walls to actually kind of curb that? Because I know the, the, the vacuum cleaners are part noise, that's something, you know, y'all might be able to do something about a little bit, but what about annoying people like me who play their, or playing Pink Floyd, you know, up a little bit louder than I probably should at 10 o'clock at night when people are, are trying to do this, or very early in the morning? Is there anything wall-related, sound-related, that could kind of shield some of those decibel levels from the residential areas?
Yeah, and Justin might have a better response on that than me, who's, who's remoting in, but the, the wall at the back of the property should help accommodate some of the sound absorption. And then also, I'd just like to know, on the vacuum producer, which is where, you know, a lot of, you know, typically, the noise is generated from the vacuum production, that'll be a fully enclosed structure as well, so that, that noise should be primarily mitigated by the structure it's enclosed in, and then the blowers are at the, you know, the, the further end of the property. That's, that's truly where most of the noise is generated from the car wash. Now, people playing their radio and doing things where, where, you know, of course, we will have some signs and things on the property that please ask them to be mindful of the, of the neighborhood and the community, and then we will also have a site attendant that will be available to help kind of mitigate some of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And Mark, now we know exactly who to go after if there are noisy people on this property. So everybody knows who to contact.
I'm guilty, now, now I'm going to switch to Led Zeppelin. So who can I frame on here on that one?
Any other questions? I guess I'll ask this, because I know you said noise studies, and maybe, maybe perhaps, you know, in terms of understanding the wall and how much noise that, that cuts down. As far as, because I'm a visual learner, if I'm, if I'm standing right here, how far away, how many, how many feet away typically do you try to say, okay, you know, you will be able to hear the blowers from this far away, so that's why we put a wall? What, do you, do you have any kind of information like that?
I mean, I, I'm probably not in a position to give you exact numbers right now, but I have several studies that we could share with you that show that, you know, it's really not going beyond the footprint of the car wash.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess that was going to be my question, too. Probably at the perimeter, noise would cut down quite a bit, especially with all the mitigation measures.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and could I chime in? Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's, that's Justin, speaking from above.
Welcome, Justin.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I tried to time it a minute ago, and I don't think my mic was on, maybe. Either way, glad you can hear me now. Justin Cassidy with Ramone Design Group. To Brittany's point, we've had some sound studies commissioned, because we do have other projects that are somewhat close to residential communities, and what we've seen actually is that a wall of this size and height is, it nearly drops decibel levels down to zero at a property line that's adjacent to residential, in a similar distance and situation as, as this one. And the fact that we actually have a double wall here is an even greater thing for us and is better for us. Beyond that, in studies that we've had done, they are very clear in the studies that the sound that you're going to hear generated by the vacuums and the blowers in a way that they're situated on this particular parcel will be, I guess you could say, similar to what would be just, you know, general background noise. So noise generated by traffic on Ben Payne, noise generated by what's going on at the 711 and that kind of thing, it's not going to be an overbearing thing that you're going to hear at these adjacent residences.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members?
Yeah, I, you said something that concerned me. You said somewhat close. This literally backs up to someone's home, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering, when you say somewhat close to residential area, how, how close is some of your other properties? Do you have that backup directly?
It's close.
It's close, yeah. Correct.
It's close.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so do I have a motion on this agenda item?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number R-2025-072 with the stipulation that the hours of operation are 8:00 to 9:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, rather than 9:00 to 10:00 PM. I'm sorry, rather than 7:00 to 10:00.
Okay, so the motion is for the resolution with the adjusted hours 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week.
I'll second.
Do I have a, okay, so I have a second motion and second. Do I have any other discussion on this item? Mr. Manville.
I was just going to say, as far as noise in the morning, I'm not sure, we've lived in, as long as we've lived in our house, we have a neighbor who probably self-start or starts his truck from inside the house every morning at 5:00, shakes the walls of our house, our pets jump off the bed, and I've lived with that. That's just the sound of someone starting their truck every morning. I can't imagine that the sound of a car being washed or vacuumed on the other side of a stone wall would present any, any kind of noise issue. The last place I lived, I also lived within a half a mile of LBJ, and I could hear that freeway all day and all night if I opened a window or a door on my house, and I just think, it's just, I guess it's just my personal observation, I can't imagine this car wash being a detriment to anyone's life or comfort in their own home compared to trucks starting and freeways nearby.
Okay.
Just, just a thought there.
Of course, thank you. Ms. Huffman?
Well, I was glad to see that the blowers are going to be on the south side of the, of the building, because at the, one up here by the Sonic, you have trouble ordering at the Sonic sometimes because the blower is, or the car wash is so loud, so I think that was a, a good play to put it on the south side of the building.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion before we open voting on this motion? Okay, we'll begin voting. This is for the resolution, this is for a motion to approve the site plan with the hours being 8:00 AM, open 8:00 AM, closing 9:00 PM. You may begin. Motion passes 6 to 0, thank you. Okay, Ms. Vicki, our next agenda item, please.
All right, it's Agenda Item 6D, which is conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget for, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026.
Okay, so we will officially open this hearing at 6:48 PM.
I've received no requests to speak.
Okay, then we will, yeah, then we will close the public hearing at 6:48 PM as well. Next item, please.
Item 6E, conduct a public hearing on the 2025 tax year proposed property tax rate for the City of Fayette, Texas.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at 6:49 PM. Do we have anybody wishing to speak on this issue?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 6:49 PM. Next agenda item, please.
Item 6F is discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding the fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed budget.
Okay, Mr. Kovacs, do you have anything for council?
No, nothing has changed since the 18th, so we can, we have a presentation we can run through, or we could skip it. It's basically what you've already seen.
I think, unless there's objection, council, we can skip the presentation? If, if nothing's changed from the last time we saw, okay. Okay, so we'll take, okay. Okay, well, we will, that completes that item, we don't need any action there. Next agenda item, please.
Okay, item 6G, which is discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding surpluses in the general fund.
Okay.
Brad, you and I are going to team this one, go ahead, sir.
All right. We are going to tag team this here. So we are going to run down the numbers right from the staff summary. We started the fiscal year 10/124 with the 8.3 on balance, and total revenue as of July 31st, 14.5, expenses 11.9, and net transfer about $100,000. That leaves fund balance of 11 plus some changes. Out of that, 5.1 for the 120-day reserve, that leaves about 5.8 million unassigned fund balance as of July 31st. If you fast forward to 9:30, we estimate about 4.9 million, and 12:31, about 3.4 million dollars. I would like to keep about a million and a half, just in case if we run into any headwind between now and December, so that leaves about 1.9 million for any transfer to any other funds. And Michael has some suggestions at the bottom, that is not set in stone, you can always make changes, you know, so that is our suggestions.
Right, so we've suggested paying off the utility fund loan that the general has, fund has, for $365,0562 is what the balance is, so we would send money from general fund into the utility fund, and we prepare, we've prepared a budget amendment for that for next week. Also, the Fayette Station Park, one option is to, actually not necessarily say send it money to the MD, if we actually send it to a Capital Projects Fund, that would work there.
That's right.
So we could offset some, we can knock down some debt, so basically, put some money toward that. The total estimated projects right now, about 4.3, and then, of course, road replacement, we talked a lot about road replacement, we could, we could begin a road replacement, significant transfer into that fund. We've never really done a big transfer into the fund, so we could do that for a million. That would happen, that would be something that would really set the city apart, that you could talk about and celebrate across the state and perhaps the country. And then sidewalk construction, this is one of the ideas we had, was, was take about, the remainder is about 55,000, and send it to the Capital Projects Fund, where we would also do the, some of the downtown park work. One option, instead of doing that, and we would use that for some sidewalks, if we want, if we don't want to do that, then we've got, I know we've heard some council members talking about downtown improvements, so we could send money, instead of for the sidewalk, we could send it for, for downtown improvements, other downtown improvements, pedestrian safety, traffic calming, maybe some small improvements here and there, so that would also still go into that Capital Projects Fund, so we've got to have a lot of versatility there if we send it into that fund. So those are our suggestions, and we're free to discuss that and give us any direction you'd like.
Okay, great, thank you. Discussions from council?
Yeah.
Ms. Chin?
Is Matt able to come up to the podium for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
So I know me and you have been back and forth talking a lot about what we can do to invest in downtown and make it economic-friendly, make it to where people want to go down there and spend their money, and when we spoke about that, you had some ideas for what we could do for improving, and if you want to, I would just like for you to share some of the ideas that we had kind of gone back and forth on, and, you know, how that would help bring in new business and bringing people that, you know, from outside of Fayette to spend money here, and we can become more of like a, a nice place to go when it's the holidays or what have you.
Yeah, so in the absence of a Parks Department, economic development many times serves as that role, and downtown is sort of our focal point, and it's the, it's the community spirit, if you were the heart of Fayette, if you will, so some of the suggestions I had were just to fund some of the, you know, decorations, event-driven, a lot of the downtown events that you see that my staff heads up is really funded almost entirely by donation, so it's existing businesses in Fayette who want to participate, and, and they'll throw something into the pot, they'll make something happen, it's in-kind donations, and so with an actual budget to be able to help promote and, and drive people down an actual budget to be able to help promote and, and drive people downtown, so the Fayette Station Farmers and Artisan Market would be a great example of that, where we kicked that off this year, it's been wildly successful, we get a lot of attention, and I, we don't really spend a whole lot of money on that. And so when you have these small businesses that are, that are opening up downtown, and they're really very reliant on the, the drive and the heartbeat of that downtown, they don't have fifty-six thousand cars per day on Interstate thirty, so if there was funds available, I could use those for just advertising. Many Texas downtowns are members of Texas downtown, and they may have, maybe their main street communities, and they have groups that, that fund that type of effort to help everybody. So think of it like a business owners association, and they promote downtown. Well, that is economic development here in Fayette, and so in the, again, in the absence of a Parks Department and a separate events funding, we've sort of served and filled that role, so I would say advertisement, improvements to the, the plaza downtown where we hold the Fayette Station Market, improvements to the park, and then, as Mr. Kovacs already spoke to, the, the intention of developing that downtown urban park to the next step, if you can knock debt down there, that's, that's great, too.
Okay. I, I don't know if this needs a motion, but I would like to propose, I guess, that we dedicate fifty thousand to go towards, specifically towards economic improvements to the downtown area, to kinda help out and partner with some of those businesses down there to bring in more business. I think that it's really important that we focus on making downtown something that is on the map for people, and I think that, you know, holiday decorations are a big deal. If you've gone to Greenville at Christmas time and you've seen the lights and the decorations and everything, it makes everybody wanna go down there, and I think that, you know, Fayette has a unique opportunity to be able to provide something like that, that's different for our area, so that would be my, my only change that I see from the proposals.
To that end, and this is regardless of these funds, it's already been purchased, we will have Santa Claus downtown this year, we'll have photo opportunities, Instagram-worthy, we're all ready for that.
And, and I know that we also talked about you wanting to have sort of like a marketing budget so that you could, and this will be included in that, obviously, but having funds to be able to do online marketing, and then also you said, you know, I think you mentioned something about a magazine that goes out in the area and kind of advertises all the different businesses that are down there as well.
And we, we would look at what, you know, downtown Rockwall and downtown Roy City do already, see what's been effective, and yes, we would, we would make good use of those funds.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chin. Mr. Hatley?
Oh, I was gonna hit Matt up one more time.
Oh, Matt, we come back up here.
Um, I, cause I know I've, I've been talking to Michael several months about Christmas decorations and things like this, I get a lot of requests about going wire, why are Christmas decorations here at City Hall when you can only really see them coming in one direction, but they actually wanted some downtown, they thought it might draw people in. I don't know if that's part of the plan or not, but I think, I think it would be excellent.
I'm, I'm working that right now, Mr. Hatley, with remaining surplus that I have in my budget, it's, it's enough to do some.
And your advertising, I, I love that idea, cause we've got a top fifty barbecue place here that we're pretty proud of, and I think if we could, I, I don't know how financially feasible it would be to get some advertising on the, on, on thirty, to, to kinda draw people over, especially when we get going with the Fayette Station and moving everything over in that direction, to kinda get people to exit seventy-three, move that mile this way, and get them into, into downtown and honestly spending some out-of-town dollars here in Fayette to go do that, I think that would just be awesome, but I don't know, we're looking into that, about advertising, the, that, but I think it would be, I think that's a great idea that you came up with.
Yeah, so currently in my budget, I have a very small amount for like social media ads that would drive people for Fayette Station Market, that's, that's pretty much it, so.
Maybe we can do some research and see if, if getting you some more money, I might be able to, to get people to exit and come to the downtown, cause it's, it is off the freeway.
Right.
And I know there's, there's places, when I go to Waco, that, that I, I take that extra exit because I see signs, and, and I exit and will drive that half mile, make that extra effort because I see something really, really cool on that billboard that I really wanna go, and we stop there and go get barbecue. But, but I guess that's, maybe we can look into that and see what kinda money you need to, to do that and see.
Downtown Fayette is really, really cool, we just need more people to know about it.
Exactly. And advertising does work, as you see that on, on the billboards, so, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Harper?
Yeah, I actually, you and I put this on the agenda, I wanna talk about a couple of things, and, and the reason for some of these items that we're doing, so, just so the public is aware, the utility fund payoff, not only does it pay off that, that debt, but it also sets us up for the fact that we may not have increases in the future because of, of the, of that debt being paid. So our, with the, with the additional funds that are there after we pay off the debt, it will, again, potentially keep us from having rate increases in the future, some rate increases in the future. Never wanna say we can't, we won't have one, but the million dollars towards the road fee, as I think I said the last couple of times.
Just to make sure, you said road fee, you mean the road replacement fund?
I mean, road replacement fund, sorry, you're right, road replacement fund. We have eighty-four thousand something dollars in the road replacement fund today. It is three point two million dollars to replace one lane mile of road, so we couldn't even do a quarter mile of road here in the city of Fayette if we had to replace that. We have aging neighborhoods quickly, Wood Creek, my neighborhood, Chamberlain Crossing, which doesn't sound like it's very old, is almost fifteen years old. Those roads pretty quickly are going to be, some areas are gonna need to be replaced because of cave ends or whatever that's happening there and, and maintenance. But that one million dollars saved today is potentially four million dollars saved to the taxpayer in the future, based on compounding and that sort of thing. If you, I'm sure Raju has the exact amount, how much it might be able to save us, but it, it is a savings in the future for the taxpayers if that money's in the fund today. I agree with Cody and, and Mark Hatley that we should carve out some for, for Matt, and one of the things that I, I know was talked about, and I wanna make sure happens, is if we, if we carve out fifty thousand, or even if we carved out seventy-five thousand for Matt, give him some money to put up a billboard somewhere for a couple of days, that we do something with the crosswalks downtown, allotted crosswalks, so that people know that they can punch the button and cross the street, cause the traffic downtown is, is quite heavy most of the time, and it is a blind crossing basically between cars. So I, I know there was some interest in that, especially from Councilmember Kelly, who's unfortunately not here tonight, but he was wanting to do something like that. So my, my proposal might be to maybe take down the downtown Fayette Station Park, take a little money out of that, give Matt his fifty, I'm sorry, give him his seventy-five thousand. Is that enough, Matt? Okay, and that would cover what Mr. Hatley asked for as well. Take that down, so taking that fifty-five plus another twenty-five out of the downtown Fayette Station, that would give us four seventy-five there. How much are those flashing lights, Michael, how much do those cost?
I sent a message last week, I think depending on how we do it, between twenty and thirty thousand. It depends if we have to break concrete to put wires underneath, if we could do it, if we could do it solar, would be cheaper.
So, so then Fayette Station, four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand to the flashing lights, and seventy-five thousand to the downtown. Make, make downtown great fund.
Well, kind of along those lines, I did wanna ask, the, the money that we've set aside for the America two fifty celebration countywide, all of that money that we have is going, we're giving that straight to the county for, like, kind of a uniform effort, right?
To the historical, the historical association.
Right, the historical association. So we, so that doesn't give us anything to do our own special thing downtown?
Uh, it will provide banners for downtown, and so we're, we're specking out banners, and it'll also provide for, for banners and polls throughout the city at entry points, ten, about relatively ten thousand dollars worth.
Uh, for, for banners? I just wanna make, I know, and I'm not, I'm, I, I don't know how much those cost, I've never bought a bunch of banners before, I just wanna make sure that we're, we, like, we know exactly what we're getting with that, because I also would like to see some of that money, if we give Matt some of this, cook up something special that we can do downtown to celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence that's coming up next year, and so planning that now, we can put something really special. Hmm? No, that would, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, that'll be summer, though, so we won't, we won't have, it'd be October twenty twenty-six past the, the time, right? Am I thinking, is that correct? Okay, just making sure.
There's only one, one minor issue, the, the way we've got the budget amendment written, of course, we can re, we can rewrite it, we, we actually had to turn in the staff summaries today or yesterday, Friday, but it's because we have a compressed schedule, so what may, what you may see in the packet, it may not reflect what we're doing tonight, we're gonna have to change everything literally tomorrow and try to put all this in, but we're, we're sending, proposing money, sending money to the capital projects fund, so that would be for capital improvements downtown. So Matt could play, if he, if we wanna use it for programming, he's gonna have to play a little bit with the M D D budget to maybe do some of the programming things you wanna do out of the M D D budget, and we can rearrange that, and then do some capital things through the transfer, if that matters, or we can just send money to the M D D, which is also possible. But we are trying to knock down, the, the purpose of the big chunk was to knock down the debt, the future debt.
Mr. Hatley?
Uh, I was just gonna say, do we, do we have a plan in place at all to, to work on sidewalks for, for downtown, the area where, make it a little bit more walkable?
Uh, not, I would say, is Ryan still here? There, there he is, hello. Sidewalk, the sidewalks you proposed, they're not necessarily downtown, but we're connecting, we're trying to connect pieces of the community to downtown. How would you use the fifty-five thousand we suggested in the sidewalk?
Well, as a part of the, of the Fayette Station Park plan, we are working to connect the sidewalks, the trail that was installed behind the Canopy Homes Build to Rent project via the existing crossing on Crawford to the downtown. That's gonna be an essential connection, because if that's put in place, it's thousands of homes that can suddenly walk or bike from their homes safely without encroaching into Highway sixty-six and having to walk in a bar ditch or something. We also are looking at some improvements on Elmhurst to start stepping down what we did on Fayette Main to the next block down, and looking at drainage, looking at right-of-way improvements, and making that a walkable block so that as development occurs on that block, it'll be pedestrian-friendly, it'll be accessible, and just complement the vision that we, the long-term vision that we have for downtown.
Now, and that flashing light, is that gonna go between where the parking lot is gonna be behind the grocery store to get over to Fayette Station?
Right, we, we had talked about when that, when that parking lot is put in place, because it'll also be a portion of the, the Vila Web, the, the bike ped trail that is being envisioned to go more or less along the, the railroad right-of-way, there'll be a crossing there so that folks who not only are parking there, who wanna walk over to the, the kind of core of the downtown there, they'll have a safe crossing with some sort of pedestrian signal, but those who are biking a longer distance as part of a regional network would be able to cross at that location as well, so yeah. And the city-owned portion of, of Crawford, which is city-owned right-of-way, north of Fayette Main, south of the tracks, it would be located at the, at the entrance point there.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Huffman?
So surplus is exciting. My, my default feeling is that we should put money toward debt, and then savings, which would be toward roads. So I, I like the first, I mean, the utility fund payoff, I totally support that. And then, when you're talking downtown, my default is safety for downtown, so the, the sidewalks that you're talking about. And then also, I mean, I know that it's the, the state highway, but if there's a way to connect, to make, if we could look long-term, connecting to make the walk to the middle school a little bit safer for some of the kids who are walking from the neighborhoods, oh my gosh, it pains me to see them right on the side of sixty-six every morning when I drive past, so. And then we're spending money, but it's for a good cause to, to sort of initiate better focus of downtown, so I like that, but that's kind of my order of priority is debt, and then savings, and safety, and then generating the downtown.
All right. Mr. Manneville?
All right. I just wanted to find out if the, the dollars that we're talking about spending to improve downtown and things that would go to Matt's budget, would those probably be being moved to the M D D fund?
If they're gonna be operational in nature, then we'd move them to the M D D fund, just so it's a little easier, but if they're gonna be capital, then we just put them in the capital projects fund, the general capital projects fund.
Okay.
So we'll have to get.
So they're prob, some of these are, sound like they're capital, some things like banners or decorations, those probably wouldn't be capital, but, okay. I just wanna make sure, if they go into M D D, it seems like they'd be less likely to become part of the budget base for an ongoing year. The M D D budget's a lot smaller, one of the first meetings I went to with M D D, we looked at that budget, and it was a quick review, it's a, it's a little budget, and the city's budget is so much bigger, I just wanna make sure, if we put an extra fifty, seventy-five thousand for things that Matt would be managing, that it wouldn't become part of a base, it's sort of understood these were surplus things.
Right, right, that's the trick of creating programming, is the, if, once, once that programming is completed, then it's, the expectation is next year you'll do the same thing, and then the money's not there.
Or your council members will remember. That could happen, too, yes. Okay, thanks for laughing, Andrew.
Mr. Harper?
Yeah, I, I wanted to clarify something about the flashing light, the ones I was talking about was not for the one crossing Crawford, that was for, I would have figured that one would be part of the parking lot project, right?
That's, I think we're envisioning right now, yes.
Because mine was more.
Fayette Main.
Fayette Main, right by the police station.
Right where we've got the existing.
There's a crosswalk there now, but it just, no one even knows it exists, so, okay.
So fortifying that and making it more.
All right, I just wanna make sure that that was.
Yes.
And then I, I mean, I agree with, with Martha, I mean, I think we are paying off quite a bit of debt, and then the savings plan for the, for the million five, for the road replacement fund. And then the sidewalk construction, is that, is that extra sidewalks downtown, or is that the sidewalk, Ryan was talking about, what's the fifty-five thousand dollar for, which sidewalks are those for?
Those were things he described, that he just talked about. So some, some downtown, potentially.
Okay. I don't know. Yeah, how much sidewalk does fifty-five thousand dollars get us? Ten feet?
That's a question for Scott, I don't, I don't have the numbers there. But yeah, the sidewalk gaps, where we identified in the, in the, in the sidewalk control's gap analysis, we started looking at the prioritized sidewalks, particularly in the downtown, and we'd find those areas that would get the most bang for our buck, especially, you know, essentially, and we'd be able to, you know, install those sidewalks, kinda like what we're seeing on the north side right here, they just started putting in a sidewalk to connect all of Wood Creek on the north side of City Bourne to finally get over to Bobby Summers. We're looking, it's basically to, to respond to those opportunities that we identify in existing plans to implement them and start making it a more walkable and connected community.
Okay, all right. And I don't disagree, I was just trying to figure out what, maybe it is Scott that we, ask, how much sidewalk do we get for fifty-five?
How much is this thing? How, how much is this little connector here? Do you remember how much that, that contract was?
Probably twenty thousand.
Whoa.
Twenty thousand for the audience.
So, all right.
Boy, things are a lot more expensive than they used to be, aren't they? I was gonna guess, I was gonna guess six to eight, and it's twenty.
Okay, so, so maybe we need to take the Fayette Station Park down to four hundred thousand and add additional money to the sidewalks, since we're gonna get twenty-five feet for fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, any other thoughts to share on the discussion of the surplus in the general fund? Mr. Manneville?
I just wanted to make sure, are we, we're talking, the original amount of all these surplus items, all of Michael's points here, was, or Raju's, one million nine hundred and twenty thousand. So we're just talking about, to, to leave the surplus that Raju wants, we're just talking about shuffling within that one million nine twenty. Okay, so we stay at that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
You're not spending any of Raju's money, because he'll be angry.
I didn't, I didn't think so.
Do, do we need a motion on this tonight?
Uh, it would, it would certainly help us, yes. Cause we've got to turn around to budget amendment.
Then I will, uh, I will make a motion, and somebody get their calculator, because I can't do this on the fly, um, that we send 365,562 to the utility fund loan payoff, that we send 1 million to the road replacement fund, that we give Matt, somehow you guys figure out where it needs to go, but we put 75,000 somewhere where we can do the right thing with downtown.
Okay.
And then we take the Fate Station Park to 400,000 and use the difference in the two for sidewalks.
I'll second.
We gotta, gotta do the math, though.
Okay.
We wanted the math, right?
Yeah, that's why I said somebody mathin', because I was not mathin'. And I can say it again if you need it to.
Anyway you slice and dice, I have only 1.9 million, by the way.
That's right. We're not, we're not gonna spend any more than 1.9 million.
That's right.
At, at the end of 1.9 million, the sidewalk ends and the road begins.
And so presumably-
Raju, is it, is it 1,920,000 or is it just 1.9?
20,000 makes a difference.
Yeah.
It's extra four feet of sidewalk.
Did you have an idea in mind for sidewalks?
No, I was just gonna take what the difference was between-
Okay. The, if we put, leave 400 for Fate Station Park, that leaves 80,000 for sidewalk.
That works for me.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion would be the 365, 562 for the utility fund loan payoff, 1 million for road replacement, 75,000 for downtown, 400,000 for the, uh, downtown station park, and then what did you say, 88?
80.
80? 80,000 for the sidewalks, just so we have a nice crisp number on it.
And that's at 1,920,000 of a surplus.
562, yeah.
To the penny.
To the penny, to pay off the utility fund debt.
Before, before we go for, where, where would the flashing lights come out of that?
Uh, we would, in my interpretation, would be out of that 75,000, we would do the flashing lights.
All right. And that gives Matt plenty of money and we get flashing lights and no one gets killed.
That's a winner.
Hopefully.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, so-
Is that total 1,920?
Does it look good, Mr. Manaval?
That's my motion.
Yeah, 365, 562, utility fund payoff, 400,000 for Fate Station Park, 1 million for road replacement, 80,000 for sidewalk construction and 75,000 for downtown and whatever.
You're right.
Improvements.
Okay, so Mr. Harper had made the motion and Ms. Chin did second it. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, let's vote please on this motion. The motion passes six to zero, thank you. And thank you guys for working with us on that and answering those questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
One, one note, because the staff summaries were prepared actually a week ago, we're gonna, it, what you see in the packet may not match what happened tonight, but we're gonna do our best.
We can, we can tweak those.
Okay, okay, great.
As long as, as long as it's done before 5:00 PM, I have to post the agenda by law by 5:00 PM tomorrow, so just-
All right, we don't have to have another public hearing because of that, right?
No, no, no.
Okay.
We'll be running, we'll get it.
Yeah, we can do it before 5:00 PM.
We authorize Vicky's overtime. Oh, it's the open, it's the new state law with the Open Meetings Act.
It's, yeah.
Okay, what is our next item, please, Ms. Vicky?
Next will be Agenda Item 7, which is Mayor, Council and City Manager Reports.
Okay, Ms. Chin, we'll start with you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the lady who spoke tonight from the American Legion, um, really great information and a great reminder to, um, pay attention to your mental health, pay attention to the mental health of the people that you love. Um, I'm somebody who obviously was, um, is very impacted by veterans here. My, uh, brother-in-law actually was a, an Army veteran and he committed suicide. Um, and my husband was his brother and that is, um, something that he's also struggled with because of his military service, so I really, really appreciated her comments tonight and, um, it's sobering to think about, but it's something that is very important, so other than that, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Harper?
I, uh, second what Cody said about the suicide prevention, very important to check on your loved ones and, uh, support them any way you can. Uh, wanna say thanks to, uh, all the city staff, this budget is finally wrapping up here, getting to the end of this, and I know you guys have been working hard, um, and also implementing all the new laws and changes, as in, as Vicky said, she's got some changes in her life as well, and I always appreciate the willingness to, to help. Thank you.
Mr. Manaval?
Okay. I, well, I would second what everyone said about the suicide prevention. I think we heard from the numbers, I think almost everybody has somehow been touched by a suicide of a family member, someone close, and it's just, it, prevention is the most important thing when you see something, when you've seen something like that happen. And I also wanted to thank the staff, I got, um, well, just once again, I wanna, I got all the answers I wanted and we got understandable reports, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Hatley?
Uh, I would also like to thank the, uh, the, uh, American Legion rep who came and, and spoke about the, the suicide, um, prevention. It's, I, I've always made myself available to friends and they've done the same thing to me, and I, I would just say, I'd, I'd rather somebody keep me up all night long, I'd rather lose sleep than lose a friend or lose persons, so I'd encourage people to, encourage everybody you know and to, uh, to pick up the phone if they're even, remotely even thinking about it, but, uh, because everybody's life counts, it really does, and it's, and it's important, so I'd just say be available. But I'd also like to thank the, uh, the city staff for all the work that they did, and I know several of us drove everybody crazy with emails throughout the day and sometimes there, I'd be shooting them through, through the night, but, and as always, I'd like to thank, from the bottom of my heart, the DPS. You guys keep us safe and, uh, where it's, where we can walk down the streets at night and not have to worry, uh, that much. Uh, so, uh, that's important, they're, they're, safe cities are not an accident, it takes a lot of hard work, but, uh, once again, thank you to the staff.
Okay, and Ms. Huffman?
Uh, reiterating what everybody was saying, um, mental health is hugely important and it's, um, something that, uh, focusing on suicide awareness will help people keep that to the forefront. Um, thank you to the staff also, you guys have been putting up with all of us in this budgeting process and, um, you've been very patient, thank you, and very informative. Um, and then also we have Celebrate Fate coming up in a couple of weeks. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, but it has been super fun in the past and I recommend everybody go and have a great time.
Okay. This Thursday, this coming Thursday is the anniversary of the September 11th terrorist attack, so just, um, keep that in mind, especially as our nation sees a lot of division and a lot of things going on. I think that can be, as, as terrible as that tragedy was, that can be an opportunity for us all to remember what it is that we have in common and celebrate our great nation through that. There is a remembrance ceremony on Thursday at 8:30 AM at the Rockwall County Courthouse, so if you're able to attend that, I think that would be a good, a good opportunity to go and show support for that remembrance. Uh, as far as the, uh, this budget process has, has gone, and I know we'll, we'll, we'll cross that finish line next week, but it really has been exciting, I think, to see , uh, council, staff, even though we have a lot of different options, all working toward a goal of making this city great, and, and I think I'm, I'm pleased, it's a, the privilege and honor, uh, is certainly mine to sit with each of you guys up here to ask staff questions and, and you, you guys being able to answer and the curveballs that we've been throwing, it's been an amazing opportunity, I've been a, it's been a joy to be part of it, so thank you for that, and I'm glad that we are able to take this message out to our community to show them, hey, this is what we're doing and this is what fate is becoming. So it's exciting, I want to keep that momentum up going into next week. Mr. Kovacs?
Yes, sir, just a couple items. Tomorrow at 6:00 PM, the MDD is going to meet and talk about economic development, and then next week, uh, we're back on our normal schedule, 6:00 PM, council meeting next week, as some of you have alluded to, and then just kind of a fun thing, it's, it's, it's great to see, um, football out on our lawn here, which we've never quite seen that before, so it's, lots of, lots of good practicing going on all over the park, lots of park uses, especially as the temperature gets to that point where you can really get outside, it's kind of the fun time of the year starting, and good timing for Celebrate Fate coming up.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, the next item, please.
Okay, next will be Agenda Item 8, Executive Session in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.001, the City Council will recess into Executive Session Closed Meeting to discuss the following. A, in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding 1, Chapter 43, Texas Local Government Code Development Agreements for Arcad Property IDs 10359, 10387, 10635, 10893, 11222, 12197, 51577, 90314 and 91084 and Annexation Law. And 2, Senate Bill 2038, 88th Legislative Session, petitions for release from extraterritorial juri- jurisdiction, city actions in response and litigation or potential litigation, including City of Grand Prairie. And B, in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.072, to deliberate regarding real property. Number 1, South Bend Pain Right-of-Way Properties.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are coming back to session at 8:44 PM. Ms. Vicki, what's the next item on our agenda, please?
No action will be taken on items discussed in executive session, so item number 10 is adjournment.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, please vote. Don't stand up yet, we haven't voted. We don't know what the outcome is. Motion packs is six to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.